Everything all over.
Ready?
Okay.
Commissioner Busman?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Legria?
Yes.
Commissioner Withers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Well, that's us. Thank you.
Okay, minutes passed. Financial reports.
All right, our wonderful finance officer is currently on the beach down in Cabo. And so I'm sure. Today?
That's not fair.
And she flew down there the day before yesterday. We got the sunset picture. And then apparently, and I haven't seen him yet, pictures of food are now coming in, so.
Picture it. All right.
So are there questions that I can attempt to answer? I will do my very best.
I do have one question.
Okay.
And it's just because I'm worried about these things.
Okay.
On the preliminary general fund, income were?
Page what?
The first page of the financial, page nine.
On the exception report.
Eight hundred twenty-nine, eight hundred twenty-nine thousand less than budgeted. Are we worried about that?
No, that's all grant related. You know, we had a lot of buses that were in the in the pipeline, that are still in the pipeline, that will continue to be in the pipeline until I don't know when. So we haven't received a grant income from those because we haven't purchased them.
That's what I thought, but I always like to question.
Yeah.
Okay. Pamela?
Same page. What does it mean, the? At the bottom, working with Amtrak on a new portal?
Yeah. We've been doing things basically old school with Amtrak, you know. They sell tickets on our behalf, and then they send us a report, and then we invoice them. And then we've tended to have to wait, you know, two, three months before we got payment on some of those invoices. So they've set up a new online portal that will accelerate that, and we won't technically, we shouldn't have those lifetimes of them reimbursing us.
So does that refer then to the settlements, you know, on the?
When we settle the monthly?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And that's where you've seen it in your aging accounts receivable sheet. That's where, yeah, that hopefully will get cleared up.
So it's basically a new procedure for paying?
Yep. And it'll make, it'll make, it will make more seamless intermodal transport between the two agencies. And I think in the long run, and it will, a lot less stress.
Deanna?
On page 10, under revenues, item 4605, other income, $7,393. What is that?
Okay, let's talk about other income for a bit. In typical public accounting, like business accounting, when you get income, you can offset it with the expenses that you had, and it shows up on your profit and loss in the expenses that it's reduced that expense. But in government accounting, you can't do that. We're not allowed to do offsets. So when we get, like, for instance, and I don't know, I can't remember off the top of my head unless it's on her report. Look here. No, she didn't. She didn't put that in there. An example would be if we had a bus that had, was involved with an accident, and we got reimbursed by either our insurance company or another insurance company, it would go into this into this line, because it's nothing that you could really budget for. It used to be other income was like laminating fees, you know, and so it was just, it was a handful of dollars. So it incorporates, and that's one thing Kelly learned when she came on board last year. She knew business accounting, and so she thought she could offset. And I had explained to her, no, that doesn't work this way in government. And it's really, it's really weird. It's, you have to have a different mindset. So those miscellaneous things are going to be in that account, because if you look at the year-to-date budget across there, again, I was talking about laminating fees, it was $111. Year-to-date, we're over $41,000. So we've gotten miscellaneous income that goes into this, goes into this line.
Thank you.
Pamela?
I thought that there was a Oregon statute that you couldn't have miscellaneous income.
Miscellaneous expense.
Oh.
Income, you can. You can, you can with that.
And is that, it would seem that you'd also want that in miscellaneous, I mean, you'd want that in income as well, to know what's in there.
Well, they do it because it's transparency for expenditures, because, you know, all governments need to be very transparent of where the money goes. So that's why it's specific to expenses.
So why didn't they do that for income?
I have no idea.
Okay, I'll call them out.
Thank you, Pamela. It'd be good to know.
Good point.
Okay. Any?
I will point out, again, when you're looking at, you know, financials, you know, related to budget, you've got your three categories, you've got your personnel costs, your materials and services, and then your capital outlay. And you'll see that under personnel costs, our subtotal for year-to-date, we're ahead of budget by a hundred and, over $158,000. That's why we're able to start the new contract and give everybody their colas, even the non-representatives, May 1st.
Yeah, I guess I'm just sort of preparing for the future. When you do get the eight employees, that's a lot of money to come up with in one year.
Yeah. And then on materials and services, we're ahead of budget by over $232,000. And we're ahead of budget on capital outlay by nearly $349,000, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
This is just a point of information, and I don't want to give the summary of it. But the Lynn County lawsuit has been resolved, maybe next time.
Well, it hasn't been resolved, it's been?
Decided at this point.
Yeah, at this point, yeah. But we're not involved with that, so.
Well, I just, okay.
I have a quick question. In terms of residuals stemming from the pandemic regarding support from the Feds, are we anticipating more funds from the Feds regarding that, or are we maxed out?
We've still got money available to us. We've been spending it down. There is more money available that we can apply for. One of the things that we're looking at, that I asked Paul and Jennifer to look at, Jennifer's going to be taking the lead on it, is air purification systems on our fleet. We're going to learn what's out there, what it's going to cost, and then we can write a grant against that recovery, some of those rescue funds.
Give them a little support, yeah.
Okay, there's nothing else. I would entertain a motion to accept financials as presented.
No, we didn't.
Oh, we didn't?
No, sorry, I forgot. So we kind of did it backwards.
I would like to move to approve the financials for the month of March 2022 as presented.
Just Charles, I say.
Okay, got a second from Guillermo? And Mary, would you take a roll call?
Commissioner Busman?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Legria? Proof. Commissioner Withers?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, motion, motion passed. We've already had discussion. Okay, reports from the chair and commissioners. I will start with Deanna. You want to go first today?
Yes, it's been a busy month work-wise for me, so I have nothing to report.
Charles?
No report. I, again, it's like, like Commissioner Nino, it's been a busy month. Worked on the budget, obviously worked on the executive director evaluation with Pamela, Debbie, and Sue. But other than that, no, I have, I have one question, though, I guess. The Seaside, the Seaside office was, has been closed, was closed this week. Was that the staffing or illness, or is that going to open back up?
Yeah, it was illness and lack of staffing to be able to cover it.
But it's, he will, once that's resolved, it'll be back open.
He's back at work, yeah, he's back.
It's open.
I like seeing Eric, so I hadn't seen, so I didn't see him, I was wondering. Nothing, nothing other report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Nothing to report other than that I did mention, and I know some of the members of the Public Safety Coordinating Council are certainly aware of the Returning Citizen program, but I just made mention at the last meeting that we were looking forward to the development of that. And I do think that it would be a good opportunity to, for us to keep that line of communication open with that advisory council and the Transportation District as this program moves forward. Thank you.
Rebecca, if they would like a presentation, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, I'll ask them at the next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rebecca. Pamela?
Oh, nothing to report.
Guillermo?
Busy.
Nothing to report, but on a personal note, after all these months, I've only got my glasses. As you can see, that I'm getting used to. And it is, it is an exercise, it's a challenge, let me tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tracy?
Nothing to report. Please remember that this is May and budget month, and we're going to be very busy this month, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I just, the only thing I have to report, because I've been a little busy also, is that working with Charles and Pamela on the evaluation was a good experience. I enjoyed the whole aspect of it. And I would like to mention the barbecue on tomorrow out in the Warrington facility from 11:00 to, 11:30 to 2:30. Is that correct?
What are you looking at me for? Look at her.
There's two sessions, one's from 11:30 to, it's a shift change. So there'll be 11:30 celebration, then there'll be a 2:30, because there's two different meetings. Two different driver meetings, yeah. And I was really hoping to get out there. I'm still going to try, but my schedule's not looking very good for tomorrow, so.
And 2:30, so 2:30 would be the presentation part of it?
There's the, there are meetings, presentations at both, but probably the 11:30, we have the employee of the quarter, the first quarter being announced, that'll be at 11:30.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Well, both.
But there'll be food at 11, right?
There will be food at 11, there'll be food at 2:30, and it'll all be fresh at each time, because Paul's making sure that happens. All right, and moving on. Continued business, appointment of Tracy McDonald to the City of Seaside's Transportation Advisory Committee.
So this is just a follow-up from last month's conversation, when Tracy let us know that he was going to be on the, or that he's been appointed by the city for their Transportation Advisory Committee. And I just want to make sure that the board, if you're okay with it, just, you know, either let Tracy know what he can and can't do as a representative of SETD, so that would be codified. I did put there in the body of the memo, the, you know, what that tack does as an advisory committee to your city, and I'll toss it to you guys to discuss it.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we support the appointment of Tracy McDonald to the Seaside Transportation Advisory Committee, with the understanding that any decisions should be, or recommendations to the City Council on matters involving SETD must come before SETD Board of Commissioners for approval.
And a second?
I'll second.
And Charles, did you have?
Point of, point of privilege, Madam Chair, I like to thank Tracy for stepping up. He's been in this, around this business a long time, and he seems still enthusiastic to step up and volunteer. And I just wanted to comment that he, that he's doing a great job of doing this, and I, I appreciate it.
I agree with you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate that.
All right, any other discussion? Mary?
Commissioner Busman?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
I'll vote, I guess I'll vote, yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Legria?
Yes.
Commissioner Withers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business, approval of a collective bargaining agreement with ATU Local 757.
All right, so this is a follow-up from the executive session this morning, discussing the strategies the district employs with the ATU on the new labor agreement. So I just wanted to review real quick some of the highlights of the, of the new collective bargaining agreement. First being that this is going to be a five-year contract. The previous one was a three-year. So we see a lot of benefit in that. There was a few language things, nothing super, you know, I don't want to say irrelevant, but anyway, there was things like the new law that was passed last year, that the district is paying for the certain union activities with the union liaison, where the union needs to pay for that. The biggest thing is the wages, and we, we offered and the union accepted our proposal for wages. The wages for drivers have gone up anywhere between 10% and 15% for this next year. That's to help us not only retain people, but also to offer a more attractive opening wage to boost our recruitment efforts. So that's, that's the biggest thing out of it. The first year, there are those big increases, but then the following four years, we agreed on a two-and-a-half percent raise each year. That's the biggest thing. We're adding a holiday, Juneteenth, that we'll start celebrating, recognizing that's a floating holiday, along with Martin Luther King Day, Presidents' Day, Veterans' Day. Oh, I should go back and with the wages, mentioned the additional longevity paid bonuses. We've got one at seven years, one at 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and then at 25 years, again, to help with that retention program. Another thing that we did was add another $10,000 in life insurance, so everybody gets a $20,000 life insurance policy through us. And new this year is we are going to pay for short-term disability and long-term disability insurance for all employees throughout the district. The union was thrilled with that. They thought that was very generous, and they were very happy with it. I'll note that our negotiations went very well with the union. We have a great relationship with the ATU, and that's going to continue. Also, mention, you know, we talked about the Returning Citizen program, and as they were printing up CAGR agreements, while we were at their offices, I asked their president, Shirley, if she had heard about the Returning Citizen program, and she hadn't heard about it. And so I explained it to her, and I said, you know, one of the challenges was getting TriNet to donate a bus, and I said, we're donating one, but I still need another bus. And she goes, you need a bus? I'll get you a bus from TriNet. So they were very excited about the program. They want to be involved with it. And they also want to pull in ATU International and get them involved as this rolls around, rolls out across the country. So again, it's all about relationships, building those relationships with people. It benefits, and that's a good example of it, so.
Charles, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Jeff, I know that we, we've set aside June 19th as a sort of a floating holiday. I have a unique, I have a unique perspective of June 19th, since I was actually, I was born and raised in Texas. But June 19th started out as a, as a Texas holiday, recognizing the slaves in Texas determining that they were actually free. I would hope that that day, we do say something, do something special on June 19th celebration, other than just floating the holiday. So I would hope that that, the actual day, we actually do something commemorative as a transit district. Because it's too easy to float a holiday and say, well, take it two weeks before and two weeks after, then it loses what its meaning actually is. And as I say, I have a unique, a unique perspective on June 19th, since I was, I was born and raised in Texas.
Very good. Great, great comments. Mary's all over it. She'll.
Will do.
So staff is, I will say, the bargaining unit, the employees voted on this last week, and it was unanimous, yes. Unanimous vote, so we were excited about that. And that's part of the celebration tomorrow, is to celebrate the partnership that we have with the union. And that's why we'll throw in that barbecue tomorrow. We felt that was important to do. Staff is recommending that a motion be made to approve the five-year collective bargaining agreement with the ATU 757 effective May 1st.
And Madam Chairman, I would so move that we adopt this five-year agreement, effective May 1st.
Okay, thank you. Tracy, a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to comment on the, on the excellent job on this. As a, as a union steward and rep at my shop, I will tell you an agreement on collective bargaining agreements are tough.
Yeah.
And so excellent job. And I applaud you for also looking in terms of trying to accomplish retention and longevity.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And just so you know, I used to be in a, I used to be in two different unions. At first in a retail clerk's union, then I was a teacher for a time, too, so.
I want to, I would like to also say, as a past union member and a union member that sat on bargaining teams, that you did a great job. As much as we tried, we could never get longevity. That was the first thing they would throw out, and I think that's something that's really important to help keep your employees. And anybody that's had a business or been in business knows one of your biggest expenses is training. And if you can't keep those employees, you spend a lot of money training. So you did a great job.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else? Mary, would you like to take a vote first, please?
Commissioner Busman?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Legria?
Yes.
Commissioner Withers?
Yeah.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous?
Thank you.
We can have a barbecue tomorrow.
Next item is the approval of the executive director's employment agreement. Sue?
The Board of Commissioners Committee, Evaluation Committee met, and we went over not only the evaluation for the executive director, but we went over his agreement, and there were a few changes made to the agreement. As you can see, his agreement will begin on May 1st as well, and it will expire on June 30th of 2027. So this is a five-year contract. And then on page 24 of the board packet of his agreement, it, then again, just shows that his compensation is going to be, his new compensation for this year is going to begin on May 1st, but it will run through June 30th of 2023, where there will probably, you know, the next increase will become effective July 1st of 2023. On page 25, number G, letter G, long-term and short-term disability insurance were added to the executive director's agreement to coincide with all the other employees. And on page 29 of his agreement, the subcommittee would like to increase his contribution to his retirement from 800 to 1,000 per month. And those were the only, only revisions that were made to his agreement.
Maybe to discuss the salary. The salary.
Oh, okay. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. And then the subcommittee recommended, recommended, thank you, a 4% increase to the executive director's salary, which would bring it up to, I go.
103,000 something.
930,000. Bringing his salary up to 103,280 dollars. And his increase would be the same as other non-represented employees.
I would entertain a motion to accept the agreement.
I've forgotten exactly your, I make a motion to increase the executive director's salary 4%. No?
I, I.
Oh, pardon me. Did I do something wrong?
You're actually going to do that on the next agenda item. Right.
Oh, what am I doing?
Approving the new agreement.
Oh, pardon me. I make a motion to approve the employment agreement of the executive director.
I second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, now we can discuss it. Is there any discussion on the new agreement?
I just would like to add the summary report from the reevaluation board in this.
You would like to include the evaluation summary of the executive director in this report?
Yes, I will. I'd like to, if I have to amend that, would it be an amendment? To do that, or just can we consensusly say that we'll publish that?
Could it just be an amendment?
I think you could just say, approve the attached executive director's agreement and evaluation summary.
Correct.
I like that.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, now hold on, but then, okay, just do the executive director's agreement from May 21st or 27th, whatever the dates are, including the evaluation summary. There you go.
Okay.
And authorizing Board Chair to sign.
Yes. Okay, so.
And a second for that?
Second.
You made the motion.
Oh, excuse me.
I second.
Thank you for trying, I'm like, you're really.
Tell him you're doing a crime, honey.
Or don't act. All right. So is there any discussion? Okay, thank you, Charles. Any discussion? I did, I just want to mention that if you look on page 30. Okay, life insurance at 100,000 for a 10-year term. That 10-year term started. Seven years ago, more or less. So it's going to run out in the middle of this. So at that time, we will bring it back.
Do you have to put that in here?
No, I just want you guys to be aware of that.
How do you know that if you're reading?
That's what you had said.
Yeah, because this is a five-year contract.
Will it go through?
It it's, there's a 10-year term. I mean, you don't have to worry about it in this contract.
Oh, we don't, it's already not?
It's already set.
All right, never mind. I know the Charles has some questions about there being an increase, Charles, and Jeff has.
Yeah, I've got the policy and the increase doesn't happen until the end of the term.
Okay, they grandfathered it in.
It's all, it's all locked in for that, that 10-year term.
Because one of the things you'll find at your 60, Jeff, no one sets your term life anymore.
And it goes up significantly.
Oh, absolutely. That's one thing you'll come in at 60.
Okay, so that part we're, we're all.
We have to work on.
We're on that. Okay. Any other discussion on the agreement? Okay. Mary?
Commissioner Busman?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Laugria?
Yes.
Commissioner Withers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and now. Thank you, Mary. And now we will move on to compensation.
Okay. This Evaluation Subcommittee. Within their evaluation of Jeff agreed to.
Recommended.
Oh, I'm sorry, recommended to the board to increase his salary by 4%, bringing it to 103,293 dollars. So staff is recommending that a motion be made to approve the change to the Executive Director's compensation from May 1st, 2022 to June 30th of 2023 and authorize the Board chairperson to sign the payroll change notice and approve the change.
I would entertain a motion so we can discuss.
Second.
Make the motion. I can't make a motion.
I think I have pretty good going.
I, I move that we accept, we approve the 4% increase in Executive Director's salary.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, and I'm just getting some more coffee, so. Things will get better here. Okay, is there any? Any discussion? Any questions, any discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Diana.
Just for the record. With this increase or the compensation, is it? What's the expression? Is it comparable to others in that position throughout the state or and the nation?
Jeff has been very low for many years. He came in very low. I was one of the first board members of the beginning of the Sunset Empire Transportation District. And by my calculations, if the Executive Director had gotten a 2% increase over the years. Shoot, that person would probably be making 130,000 right now. So, and that's just with a 2% increase and we know colas have been bigger than that. So I really think that Jeff is being definitely. Fairly compensated, but there is room for more and he's not, he is definitely not one of the highest paid directors in Oregon. Of transit districts our size.
Thank you. I like the public being aware of that, that there's a point of reference for that.
The outlier being the Tullamook. The Tullamook County ED, which is an astronomical number, but. It is, it's like 167,000 or something.
I didn't see that. I didn't see that, Charles. Hmm. I don't know where you're looking. But I do ask for a compensation. I do a survey every year as well.
Thank you.
Emma?
I just think, never mind about the number. Whether, this is just a recommendation, so this can go higher, right? Right?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, so I mean, that's to be understood. When we're voting and the second thing is. We shouldn't do numbers, that this represents not as perhaps much as he deserves. It's not only based on. Other. Director's compensation, but also what he's achieved and he's achieved more than this figure probably reflects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary, would you like to take a vote?
Commissioner Busman?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Laugria?
Yes.
Commissioner Withers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the National Rural Technical Assistive Program Review Board.
Okay, I'm going to make this really simple and call it RTAP from now on. So Julia Castillo, who is the one that inspired me for the Returning Citizen Program and I are going to be. Presenting next week to the review board's spring meeting. And included in that conversation that I had with the Assistant Director. She asked me to nominate myself to join that review board. There's going to be an opening next year. And so I'm asking for board's permission to apply for that, to nominate myself for that. I did nominate myself several years ago, but was not selected because we actually had too many people from Oregon there and they'd like to try to balance it out. Throughout the nation. The vacancy that's coming open next year is one of my counterparts over in eastern Oregon, so. That would mean we continue our good representation from Oregon. The RTAP is a federally funded, FDA-funded program that provides technical assistance to rural and tribal agencies across the nation. The review board only meets twice a year, which is great. The travel and the hotel costs are all picked up by the RTAP, so there is no expenditure on our part with the exception of my time. And then at conferences, like with the next OTA conference in person or whenever it is. If I'm on that board, I'll be manning that table. Sharing the good trainings that RTAP provides and all the other programs we can provide us as well.
All right.
Just a. Informative question here. Who are? Neapolset Valley Transportation. Where is that? That's the first paragraph.
Believe it's on the East Coast. I believe it's up in Massachusetts because I think that there's offices in Massachusetts and Washington D.C.
Okay, probably Massachusetts. They're a lot of, sounds like an Indian tribe.
Right, right.
Madam Chairman, I would move that we. Write a letter of support and have authorized you to sign it for Jeff's application. Is that important?
Okay, so I have a. Motion to approve Jeff's nomination and application to RTAP. Do I have a second?
A second?
Yeah, so you're going to make a second?
Second, and do we put this letter, approve this letter?
Yes.
And approve all the letters written.
All right. Is there any other discussion, any other questions?
I'll just mention Robin Phillips, who that letter will go to, she's the Executive Director. She's from Oregon. So Oregon's really strong. We've got great connections.
Okay.
Commissioner Busman?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Laugria?
Yes.
Commissioner Withers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner. Romero?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mary. E, under new business, board practices assessment. Mary?
I put an overview of the program that we participate in every year. It's through SDIS, who is our insurance provider, through SDO, so it's a special districts insurance. And every year they offer us a discount on our overall liability insurance fees if we participate in the program. That I kind of described. We receive a lot of documents. You may have received emails about this. I think Pamela might have received. Since you're on the board, you receive this information. But basically, there's five different categories and every year they change the focus of their questions and they're. Wanting to approve that subject. And this year it's pretty much board. Board responsibilities, board duties, and if you've been having, if the board has participated in SDO trainings and then, and board education. So we get 2% for each of those. That's a 10% saving, which is pretty big on the amount that we pay, if you know it. I think last year, I can't remember, but it seems like it was like 7,000 or something.
100%.
Yeah, about 7,000 last year.
In fact, that's what that, that's what that extra was. That's what it was.
Okay, yeah.
Longevity credit. Thank you, Mary.
Ding. So anyways, so I helped do these because a lot of it is research and then providing them with materials that prove that, that we are in fact compliant with the question. So. Us, two of our people being part of the academy is one of the questions that was asked and we have two people in the academy. So that's. So we're pretty well done with this, but we have till next November to complete it. One of the things that we, that we're going to do. Is, is have this evaluation, which we had 2015. This will also accomplish one of the requirements, but this is a really good thing. When we had it done before, you can, I included the last evaluation. It'll be so great to see how we compare today to the, to the evaluation we had then. It's a, it's a, it's a fun, it's a, it's a fun challenge, basically. Lots of questions and well thought goes into this evaluation. So we're going to do it in July following our regular meeting. So we'll just stay a little longer. It'll be about an hour, hour and a half, 90 minutes. So we'll have lunch and have a good time. Get to know more.
All right.
Of who we are, okay? Do you have any questions? And if you do, please send me the questions. I'll, I'll keep you updated along the way of. Of what the, of what I'm turning in and what's been accomplished and what's completed. Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are done with new business. Um, any? Any correspondence?
I don't know.
No correspondence? All right, we'll move right into Executive Director's Report.
Did I fail to put this on the board deck again?
Yes.
Oh, no.
What?
I knew, I knew that.
How did I do that? Well, I apologize.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. I didn't notice. That's.
Well, let me update you on a few things and then I'll just email out the. I have a report. I can't believe I did that. Couple of things. One little controversy that's kind of brewing behind the scenes right now. As you recall, we created a stop in Union Town. On the eastbound side of the street in front of the Mexican restaurant. There just before the D'Amoy Monument. The city was actually the one that approached us first. One of their city engineers who happens to commute on our bus every day from Seaside. Felt it would meet the need for Union Town. And so that was done. We did that pullout. One of the business owners down there, not, not either of the businesses that were stopped in front are. Expressing concern that there, that that was done and forest parking spaces were lost. And without any notification. It's our understanding that in my conversations with the city manager and the. Other people involved, that there was somebody that went to the businesses and discussed this with them. So. I don't know if it will pop up, but it's very possible you will hear something about it. Who knows? But I just wanted to make you aware, there's a little.
Jeff, is that, is, can you justify, where is that stop? What, what, is it in front of the Mexican restaurant?
Yes, yeah. Well, and, and, you know, we need a large pullout because that's one of the complaints the business owner had was it doesn't need to be that big. Well, that bus, or that bus stop services are Route 101, which is our new, you know, big 300. We put a 40, 40-foot bus out there on 101. And for a 40-foot bus, the Oregon standards for a bus pullout is 140 feet. That for parking space is only 112, so it's actually technically smaller than what's needed. One of the things that I discussed with the city councillor that has been communicating with that business owner is. The fact that right now we only have two buses coming, you know, on Highway 101. But when we are able to hire more people, restore service, we'll, we'll be back to four buses. So every 26 minutes, there will be a bus going there. Plus our Route 10 services that stop as well when they come around. By the roundabout every 70 minutes. So it is, it's, it's an active bus stop. So anyway, if you hear something, just let me know that we're working with the city. She hasn't approached us. She wants the city to set up a meeting. Go with us.
Do you need to public notice when you're proposing a bus stop? I don't know.
That that I'm aware of, you know, the city again was the one that wanted it there and so they took the lead on it and made it happen. And absolutely, that would be great for us because there's not really a safe place for us to stop in that area.
Is there? Mary's, that, that bar thing? Mary's Tavern?
Yeah, Workers Tavern.
Okay, so Workers Tavern. And so there's a, or maybe it's next to the Three Cups. There's a parking lot. Is there any way that a bus could stop there and go around?
No, 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 no. We avoid parking lots. Yeah. It's not a good practice.
I know it is, but.
Yeah. So are they, this business owner, are they coming directly to us or to the city or to the Chamber of Commerce?
No, they, they have not had any, have not reached out to us at all. They've been, had tuning emails back and forth with city staff. And one of the city councillors. I would imagine this person will probably pop up in front of the city council at some point because she's. She hasn't been happy with the answer she's been getting from the city or the city councillor, so. Anyway.
I just find it sad that they would just dismiss people who don't have cars that quickly, thinking that they wouldn't patronize their. Business. So it's just kind of sad. I'll get over it.
One change that, another thing, one change that we made today, we're no longer broadcasting live on Facebook and YouTube. After the meeting, we'll post the recording of the meeting, but Mary and I attended a SDO-sponsored training on. On the House bill, I can't remember the name, the number of it. From last year's legislature, but it refers to, you know, obviously, most agencies are doing, you know, either in-person or. Electronic meetings, hybrids, but if we do an electronic component, we have to offer the opportunity for somebody to be able to speak at the meeting. And that's not possible through. Facebook and, and YouTube. So to make it simpler for all, we're directing everybody to come join us in the Zoom meeting. You know, nobody is in here today from the public, but that opportunity is there for them to join us. And then when it gets time for public comment or if we have a hearing. We would call on those people that are in the, you know, in the Zoom room. And you'll see that I put instructions in there of how people can participate. So we're, we're transparent in what we do. So that's just kind of a. So that's just kind of a FYI.
What's the difference between a Zoom meeting and a live stream?
Well, Zoom is live streaming. I mean, it's, it's recorded, it's being recorded, but it's also a live meeting.
So you can't, so you can't speak at those?
In Zoom meetings, you can. But previously, we were just broadcasting on Facebook and YouTube. And unless the person decided to join the meeting, which we never instructed them to enjoy, or to join the meeting, we haven't been compliant with the law.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Charles mentioned the Seaside office. You know, since we've been there, there's been other office space available in there that they've had difficulty renting out. It's now rented out. It's a local, oh boy, I don't remember the name of it. It's one of the watershed councils is using it as an office. So that they'll be sharing space, or they are sharing space with us now. And that'll reduce our, our payments to the landlord a little bit for the common area meeting. And so that's, that's good that there's finally somebody else in there. And he's not in there all the time, but it's kind of nice knowing that Eric has somebody to talk to. So I'm pretty excited about that. So, and I apologize for missing getting the report in there. How I did that.
I'm sorry.
Because you didn't raise.
Huh? Any questions for me at all?
All right, we'll move on to Paul.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
An exciting meeting today. I don't have any particular things to bring to your attention other than what's on my report. Any questions I can answer?
Oh, go ahead.
Paul, what is the difference, Trina, 35 foot Gilligan bus and a category A bus 35 feet?
In, in this case, there's no difference. The category A is a, a, a rating that's used by ODOT. And Gilligan happens to be, our Gilligans happen to fall into that category.
So is Gilligan the brand?
Gilligan is the brand, yes.
Thank you.
We'll start with Diana, you, you who raised their hand first, sorry.
Thank you. So Paul, there's lots of good news on your report, thank you. I did have a question that is not on this report, but just a general one. And is, is there a route in Seaside that it's still going on Mechanicum Drive? Or are they staying on Roosevelt?
The, the 101 in the Pacific go on Roosevelt. I believe the 20 goes down to Catacombs.
Got it, yeah, because I saw that there's the, that finally the sign that says bus stop went in front of the park on 11th Avenue. And I just wanted to, you know, just confirm, I wasn't sure.
Yes.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see if I can make it tomorrow to the barbecue for your, your steaks.
Very good. I, I'm, I'm sorry, but they're not going to be steaks tomorrow. It's going to be hamburgers, but they'll be just as good.
I'm sure they'll be delicious. I popped everybody's bubble, I'm sorry.
Paul, I have a question on the Sunset Beach Bus Shelter. Is, are we, is that kind of an involved with the ADA requirements? Are we going to be dropping a lot of concrete or is that?
Well, I don't know how much concrete at this point, Tracy, because I'm waiting for the proposal from the contractor. But all of our, all of our construction, all of our vehicles are always ADA compliant.
Right, okay, all right. So Charles?
Well, the point bus stops literally 100 feet from my house in Kennedy's. And some of the riders asked us, are we going to have Wi-Fi on our buses? And I don't know if that's too expensive or what's involved, but I told them I would ask if we were going to have Wi-Fi on our Long Island Columbia.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you that we've looked at it a couple of times. You know, a few years ago, it might have made more sense, but now everybody is, is pretty much connected. If we were to put Wi-Fi on the bus, and of course, Wi-Fi is billed as however many, however much data is, is used, we run the risk of people getting on the bus and downloading things that otherwise they wouldn't download because of the cost. So we don't want to, you know, support people getting on there and downloading huge movie files and things. So at this point, we don't have immediate plans to do that. Primarily for that reason. We have put electric outlets on most of the buses that we bought recently so that they can plug their devices in. That's, that's kind of where we stand on that, Charles.
There was a point rider asking, so I told him if I saw them again, I'd give them to, I'll let them know.
Okay. Anything else?
Paul, I just want to say I'm excited about the Sunset Beach Bus Shelter because when I ride the bus, that's the one I go for. So I'm, I'm excited.
Good, it, it may be a few months, but it will happen fairly quickly. And if I could.
Better than the.
If I can just close by inviting everybody who can make it tomorrow to stop by either 11:30 or, or 2:30. Have some food and, and chat with the folks here. Thank you very much.
All right, Jennifer?
Hello. Besides my report, I just wanted to add that I am excited for tomorrow's barbecue and staff meeting. Hopefully, we'll see most of you, if not all of you there. And we get to celebrate with the, all the exciting things we have going on. And I've been wrapping up my Emerging Leaders Academy project and the class. And we'll be headed to Kentucky in a couple of weeks for the CTAA conference. And, and I'll have, I have a banner and so I'll get to hang that there and present my project. And, and hopefully come back with a, a wealth of knowledge and excited for the expo there. Jeff alluded to taking on that project about the air purification. And so I'll be making some contacts there at the expo on some of the things that are offered for transit buses for air purification. And now, is there any questions on my board report? Nothing?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Definitely, I know what Paul is saying, it's an exciting meeting. So it was really cool to see how everything transpired. So thank you, everybody, for your work. So, see, there's really not much to, to report on my board. Other than I do want to highlight that SETD, we did apply for the rural veterans healthcare transportation grant. And we were able to win that grant. So we're really excited about that. Just start seeing some more definitive action taken here in the next several months to get that going and, and all that. But basically, what it really is going to do is going to help us get veterans who are in wheelchairs to where they need to go. That's not possible at this moment. So we're going to make it possible. Also, I'd like to thank Mary. I think it's really important to highlight her work in, with me and helping to get the message out. She's just really good at ensuring that there's proper messaging going out specifically surrounding, you know, the fact that we still need drivers. So we're still efforting that and making sure that we have a real good, you know, base of, of drivers eventually in the near future. We hope to continue this program and it happen, continue to just flourish. So thank you, Mary, for all the work on that. We look forward to getting some bites from messaging going out there about meeting of drivers. So other than that, if there's any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody?
Jason will be going to Kentucky as well with Jennifer and myself.
Yeah, excited about that.
Deanna, go ahead, Deanna.
Thank you, Jason. I love everything that you tell us about the travel training videos. And I think that the pandemic has brought great things, even with all the chaos and, you know, disruptions. But one of that is that it brought our district to the virtual. And just, this is our first hybrid. And between you and Kathy and, you know, all your experience with the cameras, like I get to see all of you, even though I'm here at home. And so I think that's something that has definitely been brought to our district. And I want to commend you and Kathy for all your hard work figuring this out.
Thank you very much. And hard work it is. It's stuff that I love to do and I'm thankful that I get to do it. But there is a lot of effort that, that goes into shows and the videos that you guys see. So thank you very much for that recognition, appreciate it.
It shows, Jason. You've got, you've got just a commitment to your work, really does show.
Thank you, thank you, Tracy.
Okay, moving on. Kathy?
Good morning, everybody. It's good to see you all there in person and the rest of you that are zooming in like, like us. Any questions on my report? Been an exciting time, Deanna?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for following up on what Charles had brought up before about the district, about considering our transit district. And thank you for getting the numbers because ever since I joined and I've been going to the meetings, I've heard about like, oh, the big six. And I didn't quite understand the numbers, like what, how many districts are there? So this is great to have. Thank you so much for following up. And thank you, Charles, for bringing it up and trying to fight for us to, you know, to be up there. But we, we can't quite, we can't quite justify it yet.
Absolutely, definitely, definitely.
So you're welcome. And it was a good conversation. And I think that these numbers came out of some information that SDAO followed up with me after I asked. We did have a conversation and discussion will continue about potentially adding a voting member to the board because the true at large has grown in, in percentage wise. So that we don't, as a transit district entity, qualify to have our own little bubble. But may, there is potential that our numbers percentage wise have grown significantly enough so that we get to add another, we may end up and being able to add another member representative from the true at large rather than the others. So it, it's a value, it was a valuable exercise and conversation. I appreciate your, your noticing that I, that I did put that in there. I, I always try and follow up. And, and I will add that I had a presentation that I just did this week at the Oregon Active Transportation Summit that was with some other people that were on the statewide group that was establishing some best practices for limited English proficiency practices across the state with, with, you know, agencies, groups and organizations. And it went really well. It was really well received. If I receive a recording of it, I will forward it on to you all. Anything else?
Thank you, Kathy. Mary?
Well, I just wanted to kind of go over what I've been working on with Jason, with Jason and trying to get that information out there about acquiring more drivers. So the drivers, the drivers that we need are moving that's, so it's a little bit more complicated than just anyone. Prefer a veteran because a veteran relates to a veteran. And the veterans that we're transporting are more likely to use the service if it's a veteran driving. So that's a focus. So layering it out there again between radio and newspapers, it's going to be in all the newspapers, but staggering that. So it sort of flows for the next couple of months getting out there. I have some business cards that I'd like to give you, each of you before you leave, which has information on both sides, how to contact Jason and, and what we are looking for on the back about the explanation of what it entails and tell someone that can use their own car and that they do get reimbursed for the miles they drive. Some, sometimes they're driving here in Clatsop County, but sometimes they go up to the VA hospital as well. So it can, you know, it doesn't always have to be that way. And Jason can work that out. But I'll give you each cards down in your wallet in case you know someone or, or talking to someone. All right.
You can take those to a class meeting in a few minutes?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I don't, just need can or something?
Okay, that'd be great. I will also, should have had some posters for you today, but I will also email you a copy of the poster. Who you can email, which you can email to other agencies you're working with or whatever. But trying to get it out there as much as we can. So appreciate your help. Any questions about that? This is a really cool program, very cool. Then that's about it. The rest, the rest is kind of the, the regular. And we already talked about best practices, so. All right, thank you.
Any questions, Mary?
It's nice to see you all, you know, it's nice to be here.
Hi, and Sue? Okay, I've just been working with the subcommittee with executive directors, some evaluation. Updated agreements, sent to the attorney for review. I attended the OTA conference. It was very interesting to have a lot of good things to say. And attended the negotiations meeting with Paul and Jeff. And let's see, that with the, our representative, Chat White, Whitehead from WWEV Insurance, who's our broker with Special District Insurance Program regarding our upcoming open enrollment for our health benefits. We will be, I'll be distributing packets and making a presentation at the drivers meeting. Now a lot of changes in our benefits, so, so it will be short and sweet. But this is the opportunity for the employees to add family members or to change dental insurance because we just have one medical insurance. So it's the addition of the STD and the LTD. And I've got a little summaries on both of those for the employees to give them a little bit more information. Let's see here. There's going to be a job fair with approximately 700 students coming to Clatsop County Fairgrounds. So Mary and Jay, Mary and Matt, our best driver supervisor are going to be out there to greet the students and, and talk it up. So yeah, looking forward to recruitment of eight drivers for sure. And I'm so excited that we can offer a really competitive salary. That for me is huge. And let's see here, we have two new bus drivers, one from Arizona who is fully credentialed and one who is going to be training with Lawrence. So any questions?
All right. It's been nice seeing everybody here. It's nice that we can offer both in-person and by Zoom. So I think that's going to be really nice in the future. Anything else from anybody?
I'm just curious from Deanna, Charles and Rebecca, how this worked out for you viewing with the room? Does it work, does it work good?
I think it does work well, especially like, usually I like to see in, on Zoom, I like to see everybody's just the mosaic. But by changing to the speaker one, the camera does zoom on you, not super close, but I do get to see the different people. So when I change my Zoom to the view of the speaker, I do get to see you. So it's definitely not as great as experience as it will be being with you on the next ones. But I think this is, it's very cool. It works, especially for people who can join us and who can see it for the recording. Like I said before, like this, this brings us into a more modern approach into. Like I said before, like, this, this brings us into a more modern approach into including people, so I think it's great. And the sound works, too.
Yeah. Now, you guys are very clear.
Very clear.
And we, and I can hear you as guys as well, so it's, it works well, I think the room also has like a nice sound, acoustics or whatever.
Thank you, Rebecca?
Actually, I, I think there, I, I'm glad that we're doing this, there's way more pluses than detractors. But I, I think something is lost also, because, um, the, the audio isn't all that great. You know, we can't really see people's faces that are, that are in, that are at the in-person. Um, I'm going to continue to use this, uh, because it's, uh, I, I will sometimes come in person, just because of the novelty of it, and it is nice to be in person, but it is much more manageable and, um, convenient for me, uh, living in South County, to continue with Zoom.
Yeah, I, I think it's interesting, if we go, go back years before the pandemic, we had a phone sitting in the middle of the room, so if somebody, you know, couldn't attend in person, they were on the phone, and that is just like archaic now, and it was awful. I mean, if, if you, and I, I hated those meetings, not, not, not here, but other meetings I participated in via phone, it, it's just not effective, so at least seeing faces and, uh, technology has come a long way, fortunately.
Charles?
I, I like it a lot, although I'm not having the audio issues that Rebecca's having. Uh, you guys literally sound like you do on normal Zoom calls, where I'm sitting on my computer. So if the sound is there, I like, I don't know who's doing the, who's doing the scanning of the room, or is that automatic? Jeff's doing something with a joystick or something, but I like going in and out and seeing, and seeing the, the, the person who's actually speaking actually enhanced somewhat, so, but I like it a lot, I don't like it better than being at the meetings, which I will definitely be at next time.
Yeah, the, the, the camera moves with whoever's talking and then zones in on that person. Now, what's really fun is to try to get two people to talk at the same time, and it's kind of bouncing back and forth.
It works fine on my end.
Well, if there's nothing else, this meeting has actually gone a lot faster than I expected it to today, so, um, we have some free time, or at least I think I have a little bit of free time for a minute. So, thanks, everybody, for being here. See you all later. Am I going to do this?
Oh, that sound.